Next item, please.
Next item is action items, special consideration of an action item. Other than action item number 25, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Anybody? Very none?
Move to approve action items. Recommended action. Move that action items number one through, you know, before I continue, number 30, I know we got the wrong email from the college, so somebody probably pushed the wrong button, but we do have at the table, uh, number 30, UN Resources staff recommendations. Just wanted to point that out, just in case you didn't see that. It's not what we received via email earlier. I'll just give it a second here. Recommended action. Move that action items 1 through 30 be approved as recommended as action with the exception of 25.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous?
Did you want me to read the action items? You mentioned, uh...
Want to do number five?
Sure, thank you.
Some are your agenda items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of Chromebook cards. Number three, approval of blanket order per board report 18 dash 14. Number four, approval of a contract to communities and schools, CIS. Number five, approval of non-touch Chromebooks and licenses. Number six, approval of a one-year lease with Community Development Institute, CDI. Number seven through 11, approval of change orders. Number 12, approval of contract to Taiko GCI. Number 13, approval of contract to lower urine for floor scrubbers. Number 14, approval of contract to AARO companies for carpet cleaning. Number 15, approval of contract to superior ground cover for soft surface and shredded wood. Think we have to do, I'm just trying to catch my breath here.
Do you like a drink?
Number 16 and 17, approval of contracts to Johnson Control. Number 18 through that, number 18 dash 21, approval of non-instructional and instructional personal items for P through 12. Number 22, approval of policy updates per board report 18 dash 22. Number 23, approval of appointment of executive director of student achievement. Number 24, approval of agreement, agreement between the Dearborn Board of Education and the Dearborn Federation of School Employees. Number 26, approval of 2018 summer school graduates. Number 27, approval of donations. Number 28, approval of contract to Delta Networks. Number 29, approval of assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School. And number 30, approval of staff appointments for Henry Ford College. Dr. Maleko?
Thank you. Appreciate it, Trustee Barry. So I'd like to call up, we have a couple of congratulations right now. We have Ms. Fatmi Faraj, she was here, I'm gonna call her up. She's the new director, executive director of student achievement, the Dearborn High feeder track.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so I'll start with a little bit of history of my time in Dearborn Public Schools. I was a classroom teacher, moved on to literacy coach, interventionist, reading recovery, assistant principal, and held many different positions. The reason I'm mentioning that is because I wanted to highlight what kind of district we have, and we always bring it up to our new teachers, which is the Dearborn Teacher University, and I'm in charge of that program. I oversee the professional development. We're very grateful and thankful for the opportunities our district provide our staff in terms of growing as leaders, whether they wanted to remain in the classrooms or they wanna, wanted to become administrators. So this is one great district in terms of growing our professionals inside. Two years ago, I was standing here accepting the position of Director of School Improvement and Leadership Coaching, and I have enjoyed that position with great passion. We've done amazing things in the district. I'm very thankful for the board, the trustees, Dr. Maleko, the executive cabinet, the cabinet, and the entire district staff that I have encountered. It has nothing, it's never been but a pleasant experience for me. Tonight, I'm accepting the position of the executive director of student achievement for the Dearborn High feeder track, and I so look forward to work with the community of the Dearborn High feeder track, the staff of that track, and also the rest of the district's staff. I am also very thankful for my family, who have pushed me very hard to achieve this level of accomplishment. My parents, my husband, and my, two of my children who are here tonight, I'm very thankful for them. I wanted to also take this opportunity to congratulate all of our schools and our district for receiving the official accreditation from, re-accreditation from Advanced Ad for the next five years. Thank you so much, and we will continue to inspire, educate, and celebrate, celebrate with our students each and every day. Thank you.
I have to say something.
Trustee Hamud wishes to say something while he could be recording.
While she's, it was just like yesterday, she was, she was moving, you know, into a different position in our district, and now into, he had a different position to serve, to continue her service. And if we all remember when the accreditation committee came, and I always say this because truly, Fatmi, you are one of the employees in the district. When I think of, when people talk, say, talk about your employees, she's one of the first names, honestly, that come up. And, you know, when, when that accreditation team came and sat in front of us and said our school improvement office was second to none from all the schools that they've visited across the country, I mean, I had tears in my eyes. And I know that that wasn't, you know, only you, but that was part of your leadership and what you have contributed to the schools. And I say, I know that wasn't only you, because you have been consistent into never taking credit for, for work that you've done. And it's kind of scary, because sometimes when you look at some documents that maybe she's worked on, you can see her working on them at like 2:00 in the morning. And, you know, or she's, you know...
All the folks who live in Lebanon...
In Lebanon, on vacation, working on documents. I know that you have a very supportive team that's gonna work with you, and I know Dr. Musalem here too, who I know you can turn to for any advice, just like Jill and just like Shannon. You are joining, you know, an incredible team, whether it's, and you've been part of the team with Mason, Tom Wall.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So, we're so glad to keep you, and hopefully will keep you forever, and I know that, you know, many more great things to come.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you for your service.
And I just wanted to thank Dr. Maleko for empowering us to do the things that we do. And we have here in the audience, I wanted to give credit also to Ms. Hilda Ayran, who is the district coach for the school improvement department, for her great work in the accreditation preparation too. So, thank you, everyone.
If she can stand up, because I can hear her.
Oh, she stands, so we know who she is. Oh, yeah.
And of course, to the entire district team. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, again, congratulations, and I know it's been a little longer with my commentary earlier, but important items and a great discussion tonight, and they've been waiting. So the next, we have Iman Ahmed. She could come up. She is the new assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School. And I would say, congratulations. I've been fortunate enough to recommend her twice, because it was as a teacher at Salina that I recommended her from plan as a principal, so...
Yes, good evening, and thank you. I am truly humbled, I am honored, I am grateful to be in front of you today to accept the position of assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School. Like Mark, I am also a product. I'm a graduate of the Dearborn Public Schools. I started out at Salina Elementary, and then onto Stout Middle School, and then graduated from Etzel Ford High School, many, many years ago. I'm, like I said, I'm very proud to serve. At the end of the day, we want one of those banners for Woodworth, working with Reema Hassan, hopefully.
Principal's here, yes.
To be a blue school. I will do everything in my power to work with administrative team, to work with the staff, to work with the school community, parents, students, to ensure, to make that happen, see students successful. At the end of the day, we want to see all students successful. I want to thank my family, who's here, if you can please stand. Yeah, my father, my mother.
They're waiting late, yeah.
My husband, my, my son, Youssef, and my daughter, Sarah, who took a nap. She's like, Mom.
It is late.
I think she took a nap during the NWA data. She was, she was asking me, she's like...
This is the best report!
When she was asking, Mom, where are we going? I'm like, we're gonna be going to the board meeting, and I'm, you know, trying to explain to the process. She's like, does that mean I'm gonna be bored? I'm like, uh, it'll be interesting. Special thanks to our executive directors, Shannon, who I learned so much over the course of this past year, working as, as an administrative intern over at Bryant Middle School, and Jill, and Dr. Youssef, just, just seeing your leadership. I mean, I started out with, at Dearborn High and Middle School, I mean, Dearborn High and McDonald Elementary School during my internship, started out my internship there, and then continued on, since October until the end of the school year, interning there and taking the place of Fay Turfi while she was gone. I also want to thank the leadership over at Dearborn High, Mr. Adam Martin and his administrative team, Ama Madika, who I learned, just being in those, being in their presence and being, just learning from them. I mean, I don't, I don't, I know it's only been two months, but I learned so much, just being there two months, and then learning from Andy Dennison and Fay Turfi over the course of the year, helped shape me to be a better administrator. And mentors, I mean, honestly, we're very fortunate to be amongst so many great leaders in our district, from, I'm sorry, I'm kinda nervous here. Fatma, uh, Fatma Faraj, working under her SIP and just her leadership as well, Denise Charles, HR, Mason, I mean, she's, people don't realize all the stuff that she does behind the scenes, her and her department, so I'm thankful for them. And Tom Wall, Micah Salee, Denise Charles, shout out to her. Great, great leaders that I've learned from, and I'm, and like I said, I'm not a person who's coming, I'm not a know-it-all, but I'm definitely someone who's definitely gonna ask questions and learn from those around me to help better the school community and put students first. So, thank you.
She's been around half of our district.
I'm sorry?
Out of our 30 schools, I think she's been to half of them.
Yeah, she's been, yeah.
She does know the district.
And what's, what's so beautiful about that is here, she took her time to actually recognize everybody here, and it's because she is truly a product of this district.
That's the best for me, I mean, starting in Dearborn schools, and then, and finishing, maybe, here.
And to see her and Reema sitting together, knowing that they are really going to lead Woodworth, and which...
That's great.
We know a great direction. We're waiting for that banner for Woodworth. We'll hold you to it.
And again, congratulations to Iman, and then I want to just say, congratulations to our DFSC employees that the board has said that we value, we appreciate your work on the contract. I know it was a 99 to 2 vote in favor, and the board has approved, so congratulations. We really appreciate your great work in the district, and we're very excited to continue that moving forward over a five-year contract.
Great.
Do we have to do something about 25? We need to go back to 25. Are you ready, boss? Okay. Designation of Board of Education voting delegates to the MASB Delegates Assembly. Recommended action, move that the Board of Education select the following four voting delegates, President Mead, Trustee Barry, Trustee Hamud, Trustee Petchikoff, and three alternates, Trustee Thorpe, Trustee Lane, and Trustee Nasser, to represent our Board of Education at the MASB Delegate Assembly to be held on Thursday, November 1st at 7:30 PM at the Amway Grand Hotel in Grand Rapids.
I'm not moving it.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Mead. We truly appreciate you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
We're locked and lit.
Aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous.
Did anybody note that it's, it's taking place in Betsy DeVos's, uh...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You just had to, didn't you?
I had to. I, I just thought it was...
Why don't you even mention her name? Anyways, next item, right, boss?
Next item, let's move on.
Next item, discussion item, none. Next item, Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Now, we got some emails, one from speaker tonight, and another in regards to fertilizer with our football field, so I know we'll have conversation about that.
Anything else?
I also want to join Dr. Maleko in wishing everyone who is celebrating a very happy Eid Mubarak tomorrow. I know that there'll be many celebrations across this, the city, the state, the country. And that is all for me.
Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Dr. Petchikoff.
Okay, I'll start.
This has been a long...
Since I've been promoted here. We had a building insight committee, and I want to thank Dr. Maleko, because at the last meeting, I did suggest that we better utilize our committees in order to make sure, such as the, the conversations had about the air conditioning, that we make sure that we're kept up to date, and that we can keep current with things that are happening around our school buildings. So, we did have a building insight meeting put together, and it covered a lot of topics, some of which we've already heard, but we, the first one was about the HFC proposal for the old SME building. They did just get a appraisal for the property, and if we were interested in moving forward with our purchasing it, to use it for a lot of our programs that we have, our high schoolers going to over at Henry Ford College, and currently, it would be approximately a little under a million dollars. That's not include, it's 850,000 was the original appraisal, but we don't have all the details yet, and that doesn't include any renovations we would need to do to the property if we wanted to purchase it for the P-12 district to use it for some of our collegiate academies. Dearborn High School renovations, we did hear some, some of the timelines. The kitchen is complete and just waiting approval by the state. The cafeteria expansion has a little more work to be done and should be ready for the students to use in October, and the classroom additions should be done in November so that they can be utilized for the Janu, start of the January semester. The unfortunate thing is it is over budget by about $272,000. A lot of it was due to, I guess, soil remediation and issues in that regards, and the state added more fire regulations, so they had to pay more for steel in order to make the new additions at both the cafeteria level and the classrooms, having the fire protection plans in place. We talked about the air conditioning in the schools, they're moving forward with the short term, they're gonna, they plan on having the equipment brought, produced and brought here. It's not something you buy off the shelf, they have to make it, that's why it was on tonight's agenda, and then it'll be brought and installed as we get it in. And then, of course, the infrastructure committee will be looking at long-term solutions. And then, the summer infrastructure work that typically occurs every year is moving forward. The sound auditorium upgrades are complete at Forts and Anetso, and Stout and Salina will be finished soon, and they've done some things at Dearborn High as well. And then we have the infrastructure committee moving ahead with their planning. So, there, we also got the plans in place for the Berry Center, what the six classrooms additions would look like, and cafeteria expansion, and the octagon renovated, and that estimate is a little over $3 million to do that. So, yeah, that's, that's another expense. So, that's the end of my, I think, did I miss anything?
It's a lot.
Thank you for your work. That's a lot of work. What did we miss?
Oh, yeah, one more, you're, you're right, I couldn't, I can't read my own handwriting. We will have a discussion, we've been talking about Salina, AK Steel had given us some money to improve the air conditioning on the third floor, I think it is, is that? And we asked for Dr. Maleko to go back and try to get, because we were told it was gonna be between 400,000 to 600,000 in order to do it, and they were only offering us about 150,000, which isn't even a third of the cost. So, they upped it to 175,000. We haven't, well, that's still, it's still gonna be a pretty pricey project for just air conditioning of the third floor, so I said that the three of us as a committee can't make the decision to go ahead and just accept the 175,000 and move forward with this project, so that I asked it to be brought onto, as a discussion item, onto the next meeting as to whether we should move forward and accept the proposal, or see if we can come up with another, another fistful of dollars.
Okay. And if I just, one thing, I'm sorry, the third floor was done the last time around, so sorry, this is gonna be actually the first and second.
Oh, the first, okay, finish.
Some of the rooms, and would basically finish off the vote.
Finish off, okay.
Sorry.
I couldn't remember which one it was, yeah.
This is committee, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee met earlier tonight, it just seems such a long time ago, so if I missed anything, Trustee Lane's gonna step in, help me out here. We met with Jeffrey Higgins and Thomas Marquise from Plant Moran. They went over their responsibilities under the generally accepted auditing standards, and generally accepted government auditing standards. They were quick to point out that there were some changes in the rules of accounting, mostly due to the healthcare benefits and the retirement benefits. They, they answered some, our questions, this is just a, changes in the rules when it comes to reporting on the audit. It will not impact any changes on our regular budget. They did ask for input or concerns from Trustee Lane and I, and they will reach out to the rest of the board to seek input and any concerns that we might have to bring to their attention. And they made it very clear if anybody else from the community or employees had some concerns, to reach out to them. I do have a business card, Dr. Maleko has a business card, if you want to contact information, reach out to us. How'd I do?
Good job.
Thank you. Any, any other guests, Trustee Hamud?
The policy, thank you. The Policy Committee again met today, and as you all know, we've been going through all the policies and still moving forward. Today, we went over three policies in specific. We went over one, gifts, grants, and requests, and as you know, we're constantly encouraging the district to apply for grants, if there are some available for our district out there. So, we wanted to kind of just go over the policy and make sure that everything is intact and appropriate, and of course, all grants and gifts would eventually, most of them, unless it's a nominal amount, would come back to the board for approval, and we get to decide, you know, what's appropriate, what are the conditions, what it could, could or could not be used for, and so on. Two other policies that discussed, it's, it's actually one other, but it's divided into two, one for students and one for staff, and that is information systems and internet usage, what's acceptable use of the internet, what's not acceptable use of the internet. And the policy is number 7540B, that is specific for staff, and 7540A, and that is specific for students, and it kind of just goes through our policy, our outline in terms of, you know, what's, the scope in which internet is used, how it's monitored, if there are expectations of privacy, and so on. All of that is, it's, it's a long policy, it's outlined in there. We're not voting on it today, but if you could, you know, read it, if you have any questions for us, as we continue to go and update and make sure that we're following the law and that our policies are up to date, so...
Very good.
And I, and I also really want to thank Mason, who's here, and of course, Dr. Maleko, and everybody involved, and David Mustin, and, I mean, they have been on top of really bringing all these policies through, scanning them, making sure that we're going through all the policies, whether they are expired or whether it's an issue that we're facing now, and it's not an easy job to do, so...
Very important, though.
It's very important, and they've done a great, we've, we've had the easy part in terms of looking over at the meetings, but they have really put in a lot of work into these policies.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I appreciate the board and all the committees, and really, the policy every, every month coming through is really helping us as well through our operational aspect, so thank you to the board for, you know, the Policy Committee and then the other committees. I know it was a long day today, especially with my commentary, so appreciate all of you and your involvement as we're trying to really enhance things for the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other report that covers it?
Next item, please. Next item, Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Yes, Trustee Barry.
I also would like to wish everybody a happy Eid, that Eid Ha celebrates the end of the pilgrimage of people going to the Hajj, that's how they get the claim, the title, Hajj and Hajjis, so that's a big deal. So, yeah, I wish the happy holiday to all those who are celebrating.
I just have one thing, and I, I know I had a long list earlier, and I was gonna put this at the beginning, but it didn't get through, and I know, Trustee Lane, you and I have been dialoguing the last couple of weeks with the construction around Etzel Ford and Stout.
Oh, yeah.
So, I want to let you know, the team has been on it. We don't control what's going on, because it's not our project, but it's been something Mr. Rangos has really been working, Mr. Wall, to try to communicate, Mr. Grzinski. So, according to what we were told, is that the Etzel project will be complete by the first day of school, outside of the football field, and that's a Ford project with the county and with the city. The Stout, sounds like it's gonna take several months, so it's not, it's, you know, it's controlled by the county, we've been trying to communicate and get information, and Mr. Rangos has been working on that. Today, we got onto a conference call with both Mr. Andrews and the Principal Greg Oak to start looking at ways that we can secure both the transportation going into Stout, and also safety and security for students, so those conversations are occurring. I appreciate, Trustee Lane, initially bringing that to, to our attention, probably about a month ago or so when it started, I think, maybe three weeks ago. And so, unfortunately, we don't control it, it's not gonna be right, it's gonna be something we're gonna have to deal with, it's gonna be inconvenient, it's gonna slow things down. Mr. Andrews does have a backup plan for getting the buses in, and I did talk to Mr. Oak, who explained the situation as well, but I plan to be involved in more conversations with them, and then we will get information sent out to the, we talked to Mr. Oak about putting out the blog and the information to parents, so that they can be prepared for the fact that we're gonna have major inconvenience going down Oakwood, and if anybody's driven by there, just in the summer without the school, it's difficult to get through, especially during high traffic times.
Trustee Lane?
I brought this up a while ago, as Dr. Maleko mentioned, and Trustee Petchikoff, I know, has approached city people. We're gonna need parents at Stout to be trying to move in there early, but I think that maybe the police need to be there even for the first few days. There is no walk, oh, there is a walkway, which is currently blocked by construction barrels, where the kids walk across the street from the neighborhood into the school. There's construction equipment in the path of the kids, can't walk on the sidewalk. It's gonna be really bad news when kids start crossing there on Monday. I don't know how the crossing guard is going to cross them, because there's no longer a red light, it's blinking yellow, and during Ford, Egress, and intake, it's constant traffic going through there, so it's gonna be bad news, and parents are, people are gonna be exasperated. Stout is a high busing school, and the thought of Mr. Andrews getting all those buses in there, hopefully, he can use one of the back entrances. I don't see how we're gonna get even the buses in through there, but it's gonna be a problem, and I know that Trustee Petchikoff brought it up also.
And I, as a parent who had students there years ago, many years ago, and that they were bus students, but I picked them up quite often, it's a, it's a, there's a lot of parents who drive and pick up their children, because we all came from the east end of town as well. I just, and that was a nightmare when, on a good day. I can't even begin to imagine, when I drove by there and saw the type of construction that they were doing was much more intensive than I had anticipated at this late stage of the game. Usually, they try to get these things accomplished, knowing that it's gonna impact the school. Apparently, this has not been a project that has gone along in that manner, so I, I agree, I'm sure, and I will have a conversation with the chief again, that he's aware of the situation, and will take note that we will probably need more police presence, especially in the beginning until people, because they're gonna, a lot of people are gonna be caught off guard at the first week of school especially. So, we're going to need to be all hands on deck, I think, in order to make safe passage for everyone.
That's a critical issue, is safety, yes. Trustee Lane?
Since we're in commentary, I would like to make a comment about the upcoming political season. The midterm selections, the midterm elections are... The midterm selections, the midterm elections are, are very important and everybody should be out voting. And I appreciate the candidates who are running to make our democracy more vibrant. Lots of people are running and the candidates will flush out what they think, what they don't think, and, and so on. I do want to say that I think that our superintendent and our college president should not be involved unnecessarily in the political process. They have their own political points of view, but they shouldn't be drawn in. And I hope that they'll, everyone will respect that, they'll be willing to train people on sitting on a board and give, provide information. But of course, they won't take political sides. And I think that that should be stated right out there. As I said, there's lots of people running, but one person is not running and I want to, she's probably going to flip out when I say this, but I, I want to give some appreciation. I know in December, we'll say thank you to her and she'll leave our board.
Actually, November, as soon as the election takes place.
Well, yeah, okay. Thank you. I, I just want to, I want to appreciate Celia Nasser. She's brought a lot to this board. She doesn't have, she decided not to run because obviously, it's a lot more lucrative to be in her business. But she's brought a lot to this board and she was a person who had absolutely, she, she was born on this board in fire. I remember the day that, that Mr. Courier got up and explained the legal opinion. She had so much grace to be there. She didn't know what she was getting into. It was a very, very difficult time. She handled herself with great composure. She immediately came up and took the seat and she's served since then. I want to thank her for being a colleague on the board. I don't want to wait until November. I'm sorry she's not running, but she's served our children and she can serve her family now, but she's, she's been appreciated and we owe her a debt of gratitude for her service on the board.
I agree.
Thank you, Mary. I don't want to wait either, Dr. Mead. I don't want to wait either, but I'll be very brief because I know we'll have more time. But I also appreciate, you know, Trustee Nasser. I appreciate your service and I, I truly agree with everything you said, Trustee Lane. It's from the moment you took that seat. You took that seat with professionalism, and I've said this before, and you truly were a role model to students out there with how to handle yourself with respect and how to take everything in and still do your job, no matter how negative, you know, an atmosphere is, you moved forward. I am still so impressed by, you know, Trustee Nasser is a woman of little words, but much action, honestly. She is someone who has listened. This whole boundary line issue, exemption, changes that we had, I remember relying on you so much and Trustee Thorpe for all the numbers. And I remember just sitting here in awe. And I know that when I ask her a question about anything on the agenda, she already knows what it is. In fact, she reminds me when we have the board lunches and you've, you truly have served this district while it has been an honor serving with you. I wish you were running, but I am, you know, thankful for your service and the way you handled yourself. I also agree with Trustee Lane with the political climate out there and, you know, I, I really do hope that people handle themselves with the professionalism that you've handled. But I'm so excited because there's so much interest out there and so many great candidates out there that want to serve. And anybody that wants to serve and is willing to jump into this process, I commend them. I know some of them are here today. I see one of them in here now. And it's an exciting process. And so, thank you for all of those that want to serve on this board. This is a great board, a great district. So, just for taking that initiative to want to serve, you know, I salute them. And I salute you for your service, Trustee Nasser. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last announcement, Dr. Mead. If I forget this one, I'll get a phone call and I have to get a cold sandwich on the way home. PTA picnic coming up, Saturday, September 8th. It's going to be a Ford field and it's, this picnic is grown, going to be under the large shelter from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. So, that's Saturday, September 8th, large shelter between 1:00 and 4:00 PM, great networking. There's going to be backpacks passed out to parents for our students. The most important thing is last, last year, I barbecued 500 of the best burgers. I am thankful to, for Trustee Thorpe, he's given me a break this year, so he's going to take over, so.
Not all of them.
One time.
1:00 to 4:00 PM. Last year, we literally had over 500 people. We're expecting about 7:00 to 7:50 this year, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's great. Okay.
Last item?
Last item, well, second to last item. Request for information and future agenda items?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple, I'm real quick here. I was, I heard that Dr. Musalem is excited about his new position, so we're ready to put him to work. So, I know we got schools opening up, so this, I'm not in a hurry for this, but there's, hopefully, at one point, he can come to us and share with us what is our plan for improving college readiness. For the last few meetings, we've discussed numbers. We do some great things in this district, but we can always improve. So, I would like to see a report at one time sometime soon. The other thing is bus drivers, Dr. Maleko. I know we do a lot of business with Trinity, so I would like to see how much money we spent with them the last five years and what are we doing. And I know it's difficult, not just in the city of Dearborn, state of Michigan, everybody's having a problem hiring bus drivers, but I'd like to see what actions are we...
Including Trinity, because they are right around the corner from where I live. And they had about 500 we're hiring signs out in front of their property.
Yeah, that's one, that's my point is, I'd like to see what are we doing to hire bus drivers. I know it's a difficult task, but I'd like to see that. That's it for me.
Really quickly, I just wanted to thank everybody. It's been a pleasure to serve on the board for the past year and a half. I'm expanding my business, opening in the Ford Wagner Building on Michigan Avenue, hopefully December. I'm working on another, with Eleanor's Cafe and Yogurt Town, working on another Eleanor's Cafe location and that's taking up my time right now. And so, I'm unable to serve, but that doesn't mean I'm not here. Possibly in the future, come back when my time is less dedicated to expanding my businesses and my kids are a little older. But I'm, I'm very happy, I'm very thankful and appreciative of, of the kind words. And I look forward to the next couple of months, the next, actually, the next board meeting here is my birthday. And my, my husband said, maybe you'll skip that one. I said, no, no, I can't, I can't skip that one. So, I'm here through election day, basically.
Well, you're still open to consultation, are you not?
Sure.
Okay. Last item?
Future meeting dates. You share the same birthday as my sister.
I'm going to have a cake.
Next, future meeting dates. Monday, September 10th, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. Monday, September 17th, 2018, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosemont Boardroom. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
There we are, Chair.